All right, Mr. Chairman, we're on the air.
Okay, I call the Long Hill Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting of May 2, 2023, to order at 7:33. All righty, we've got the call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting/ hearing has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting/ hearing dates on the Municipal Bulldozin Board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel and Courier News newspapers, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Standard board procedures: any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi-judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the zoning board of adjustment not to continue any matter past 10:30 p.m. at any regular or special meeting, hearing of the board, unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting to a later specified cutoff time. Electronic devices: all in attendance are asked to mute cell phones or any electronic devices as to not interrupt the proceeding. Pledge of allegiance. Tom, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll call.
Yes, Mr. Aronio is currently absent. Ms. Brennan is excused this evening. Mr. Gianakis?
Here.
Mr. Hain?
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg is currently absent. Mr. Flatley?
Here.
Mr. Opalka?
Here.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Here.
Chairman Correct?
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you, thank you. The first thing on our board agenda is the meeting minutes of April 18, 2023. Everybody get a copy of those?
Yes.
And the only person that can't vote on it is Tom and Jessica. Jessica's not here, but Tom was not here at the time. Are there any corrections, changes, or anything else about the minutes that somebody would like to say? No? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of April 18, 2023?
Approve.
You make a motion, right?
Motion.
Okay. I have a second. Somebody? Second?
Second.
Oh, good. You guys are slow on the uptake here. Okay, we'll call.
All in favor?
All in favor. I'm sorry, all in favor? Aye. Okay, good. All right. All right, that's done. Now, we have the next thing is the application resolution extension. You'll find that in your packet. It was dated March 17, 2023, for a request of an extension of a zoning board of adjustment resolution, application number 202-03Z, block number 13001, lot number 5, zone R3, 68 Central Avenue, Sterling, New Jersey. It said, "Dear Ms. Kuntz, we are requesting an extension of an approved resolution of the zoning board of adjustment for the addition and alteration of our home. While the resolution was approved and memorialized on September 1, 2020, we had to postpone the construction due to COVID-19 issues such as material availability and extreme cost increases during that period. We are now prepared to begin construction and have retained a contractor to perform the work. It is our understanding that we are scheduled to attend the ZBA meeting on April 18, 2023. We plan to attend to answer any questions that the board may have. Once approved, we will issue all required drawings and applications for building permits." Is the person here to ask for that? Steph, go ahead, please. Could you swear to me, please?
Sure. Raise your right hand. You swear that any testimony you'll give in front of this board will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Could you identify yourself and your address, please?
Mentor Batichi, 68 Central Avenue, Sterling, New Jersey.
Okay. And I just read your letter. Is there anything you want to add to that?
No, that's it. Just, we just wanted, we're asking for an extension just due to COVID, and we just like where we are. We don't want to move.
Oh, I understand. Is, are your plans ready to go forward now?
They are.
Okay. And you're asking for an extension for how long?
I don't know. A year, yeah.
A year, okay.
Yeah, just one year.
Well, let's clarify. I think it was, it's two years because from 2020 to 2021, 21 to 22...
So, I did share a resolution with you that the board can adopt tonight, and it would be one year, it would be current through one year after this meeting. So, if the board takes action tonight on May 2, the extension would be sufficient to May 2, 2024.
Okay, perfect.
Did everybody have a chance to see the original resolution that was attached? The eligible voters were myself, Gianakis, Grokop, and Hain.
And, Mr. Chairman, I actually conferred with Steve and Matt and Chris, our board attorneys, and they said that actually every member here tonight can vote, yes.
That's fine, good, okay.
Because it's an extension, even if they did not originally see the application.
Right, terrific, okay. Does any board member have a question of the applicant for the extension?
No.
Okay. Hearing none. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution to extend their approval for a period of one year as stated by our attorney?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay, we'll call.
Who should I, okay, Mr. Opalka.
We'll call.
Yes.
Okay. Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Opalka?
Yes.
Mr. Gianakis?
Yes.
Mr. Hain?
Yes.
Mr. Flatley?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Correct?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Chairman Correct.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
All righty.
I'll send you the extension.
Sure. I just had a question on filing for the permits. Would I be able to do that right away?
You can call me or email me tomorrow, anytime, the rest of this week, and we'll go over the procedures.
Okay.
I just have to get the things paper signed.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I have to review the resolution, too. I don't know if there were conditions. I don't remember off the top of my head. So, we'll talk.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Yes. Okay, now we come to the main event. We have a use variance, major site plan application, block 11301 and block 11401, lots 4 and 23, zone B-D and C, got every zone in here, Valley Road, application number 22-06Z, CSH, Long Hill LLC, Care of Cali Law LLC. Applicant proposes to develop an 87-unit, 100-bed assisted living residence. Is the applicant here tonight?
We are, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, you can sit over here if you'd like.
You know, we'll be brief, I think, this evening. I don't mind standing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, that's fine.
I think we have interesting parties as well, so.
That's fine.
I've been sitting all day. If I had an Apple Watch, it would tell me to stand.
Okay, that's good. Then, I understand that as a result of this application, there is an objector, and the objector had a letter that they sent in. Oh, that's it, right. They had a letter that they had an issue with our planner, since they said that they themselves have done work with the planning firm. Now, I've consulted with the attorney, so I'd like to hear from our attorney about his legal position. I will hear from you about your position about that, and then if the objector is here, we can hear from them.
Certainly.
Okay, take it away.
Great. So, the applicant, or, excuse me, the objector, sent a letter this afternoon, addressed to Steve Warner, the board counsel, basically outlining that their entity has worked with a partner of Liz's firm consistently over the years, and also currently has pending applications in which our board planner's firm is providing planning services for the applicant. And they've requested that the board find a substitute planner, because they have outlined their position that should this board proceed with our planner, it would be a conflict of interest. They cite a case from 2009, Clug versus Bridgewater Township Planning Board, 407 NJ Super One, that's appellate division 2009, which is somewhat instructive on the issue. And basically, they have requested that the board find a substitute planner for this application, outlining their position that Liz would have a conflict of interest in this case pursuant to the local government ethics law. Now, I was able to read that case. I did consult with Mr. Warner and also, you know, do some research into the local government ethics law. There's not a case on point on this issue. The case that they cite revolves around a case where the applicant's planner submitted an environmental impact statement to the board and purported to provide planning services for that applicant during the pendency of that application. That same planning firm was appointed as the board planner. Here, the situation is slightly different in that the objector is asserting to be someone with interest in the application, and therefore, because Liz's firm has provided planning services for them and is still providing planning services for them, that we should recommend that our planner recuse herself from this application and find a substitute planner. As I said, it's my legal opinion that there's nothing on point. However, because this application is in its infancy, we haven't heard any testimony, it would be, in my recommendation to the board, that it would be curative of any potential conflicts should this issue arise in the future, if we do indeed encourage our planner to recuse herself from this application only, and at that point, with a new planning consultant for the board and a new planning memorandum, it would be my advice to the board that that would be curative of any potential conflict of interest at this time, and it avoids the risk of, moving forward, anybody from the public, or any objector, or even the applicant, depending on the result of this application, to assert that the proceedings in front of this board were in any way tainted by any conflict of interest. So, that's my position. I spoke to the chair, and he has recommended that both parties here, both the applicant and the objector, be given the opportunity to...
Oppine on that.
...opine on this issue. But as it stands now, that would be my advice to the board, just out of an abundance of caution, because we're in the infancy of this matter being heard, there hasn't been testimony yet, to me, that would be a curative and expeditious way to get ahead of this issue, should it need to be raised in the future.
Do you have an opinion on it?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I think that was a good summary, and the ultimate punchline of mine is not really going to diverge from that much, but just a few things for the record. First of all, Larry Cali, on behalf of the applicant, CSH.
Hold on a second.
Yes.
That mic, it's blinking red.
No, it's on.
It's on, yeah, it's...
It usually is green, that's why.
Oh, it's blinking red?
Yes, it's blinking red. That's why I'm saying maybe the batteries are going dead.
It's got a beat to it.
Well, yeah, until it goes, I'll change the batteries when it goes to completely dead.
All right, go ahead. I just want to make sure you're being heard on the record.
Nobody listens to me anymore, Mr. Chairman, so... What'd you say? So, Larry Cali, on behalf of the applicant?
Now it went dead.
Now it went dead.
You know, actually, you know, Joe, see if you could just, yeah, because that's right, Joe, it's so much easier. That was just so much easier to deal with.
Got it, perfect. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
So, this was filed some time ago, board members. We think it's a relatively clean application, notwithstanding the relief. We don't intend to start prosecuting tonight. I think we're going to ultimately defer to the conservative guidance of your counsel, and I tend to agree, given the timing of this case and it's early on. We're going to have to kick the can down the road a little bit, but the applicant was ready and prepared to prosecute this evening. Three people in tow from Philadelphia were on their way here. One, in fact, is still here with me this evening. Just a few brief things on this matter. I tend to not agree with that case being, the case cited, Clug, being parallel with this application. I happen to know Liz's firm very well. I happen to know they're incredibly objective in their reviews, and I don't even think the optics of it is an implication of a conflict here. The report was written before our objector even surfaced. The case is not on point, in my opinion. There's no conflict vis-à-vis this applicant, my client, and Phillips Price Greigle at all, as we see it. But nevertheless, in the abundance of caution, I do think it's fine that the board consider a conflict planner. This way, it's not, you know, what I think could be an inevitable extra count of a complaint down the road if this application were approved and challenged by our neighbor. I think the timing of the submission of the letter is incredibly questionable, and I think that that is very telling to us. It's a competitor, objector. This is the tactic. This is objector manifesto 101. It's delay, right? So, it's delayed for either a procedural reason of one kind or another. So, one thing I'm going to ask this evening is that, once our objector's counsel gets on the record, I want him to confirm on the record that they have no challenges to the notice, because what we're going to ask this evening is that this hearing be carried to a date certain, albeit in the need for any further public notice. What I don't want is to come back in, let's say it's a June public meeting, and an objector's counsel gets up and says, "Well, you know what? I'm challenging the notice tonight, another threshold jurisdictional issue, and we're out the door again. We lose another month," because that is all the strategy is really about, at the end of the day, with a competitive objector. It's just trying to delay us, nothing more. With that said, Mr. Chairman, we're going to stack the decks with our experts. We're going to come in with a very clean, succinct, and thorough testimony in review of all the reports that have issued and will issue, should the board defer to a subsequent planner. We'll have operational witness testimony, ultimately, engineering testimony, architectural planning, and even perhaps direct traffic testimony that may be supplemented, and civil engineering testimony. We think we could probably prosecute this case in a single evening, given enough time.
Good luck.
Yeah, we'll try. I know, I know.
No.
We'll try. But our direct testimony, we know we can target in that timeline. So, just to give you a sense of the direction we think we're headed in...
I sincerely doubt you could do one night. I mean, Taco Bell had to be adjourned, and that wasn't even as complicated.
Well, I get it. Look, there's no one-night application in Morristown anymore, no matter how simple. So, we're not used to the one-nighters either, but we're going to come prepared to prosecute the case, is my point, without, you know, waiting for any more pomp and circumstance delays, which is, I think, all we've got this evening here with our objection. With that said, Mr. Chairman, we're available to any questions you folks might have?
I do have one. Regardless of what we do here tonight, whether we change our planner, don't change our planner, with our current planner, do you see any prejudice to your client?
I do not.
Okay.
Not at all.
That's one of the things I wanted to, was be clear on it. You don't see any direct prejudice to her position and your application?
Not on this case, not with Liz here, and not on any other project I've been on where Phillips Price Greigle's been on the other side of the table in my 20 years, no.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Yeah.
Chair?
Yes.
May I ask, do you see any conflict with our engineer?
No, I do not.
Thank you.
How about the traffic guy? Check it, everybody!
He said he wanted to go home, so I don't know. Want to buy me dinner after, maybe? No, for the record, for the record, no, Mr. Chairman. No conflict with your traffic consultant.
Okay, any other questions of this person? Okay. Okay, then, that's fine. If you've said your piece on that, I'd like the objector to come up and say why he thinks his position is correct, or whatever position he has.
And the last thing I want to do is thank your staff. They have been fantastic at shepherding this to getting us to a meeting here tonight. Your office has been fantastic.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
They have been second to none, Mr. Chairman. I'm sure you know that, and I realize that they don't get a chance to vote, but...
I am proud of our staff.
Well, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that.
Well, the administrative staff that you deal with, you know, on the phone.
It's been wonderful getting in the door, it truly has. So, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay.
I'm going to send flowers to your entire staff. Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Chairman. My name is Arthur Neese. It was my letter that was sent in today. I'm a member of the firm Beatty Patavano, and we do represent a company called Sterling SL Urban Renewal LLC. I just want to make it very clear, I have nothing personal against Liz. In fact, Liz has been on other applications that I've been on, and I have nothing against her firm. I use her firm for my other applications. It's not personal. What it is, is, as your counsel has noted, it's an effort to avoid what could be a conflict later on. And I think your board attorney has approached this with wisdom and with care to say to you that, in order, out of an abundance of caution, if you were to find an alternate planner for this application, I think the board would be well-served.
Okay, let me just ask you a question, and I understand your position, and I understand your theory. I just want to know, what do you think the conflict would exactly be, and how do you think your objection, your position as an objector would be affected by her being the planner?
I don't know that my position as an objector would be affected. I think the result, any result that is achieved by this board, could possibly be tainted by the notion of a, by the notion of a conflict.
Okay.
So, it's not that I'm, again, it's not that I don't, my position not going to be affected. I think it's your position that we're looking out for.
That's one of the things I was, usually, when a person says they object to an expert being on the position, it's either because they think it's going to adversely affect their position that they're advocating, or adversely affects something of theirs, or their ability to put the case forward. What I think you're saying here tonight is that there's a, there's somewhat of a potential that somebody out there could say there was a conflict, but I've not heard exactly how that affects either the applicant or your position as an objector. And I'm playing devil's advocate here. I just want to know, how is it that somebody whose firm, who's somebody in her firm, who she's told me, and I believe her, that she doesn't really have any connection with when it comes to doing his work, may do some work for your client, but here, your client is the objector, so her report is what I think objective, and I don't even think a substitute would really be any different, you know, the report, for that matter, but how her position is adverse to either the applicant or to you as the objector, in a sense that her, her firm, or one person in that firm having a connection with your client, affects this situation here?
So, I'm not the counsel. I have my own planning boards and zoning boards that I represent. I'm not your counsel, and you're well-represented here tonight. I guess the bottom line would be that since Liz's firm, and I don't mean this to sound, you know, really low, but since Liz's firm gets money, gets paid from services that they render to our client, that alone gives rise, at least in my view, to a potential for conflict. You can, you can hear your own counsel.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and I do appreciate the line of questioning towards Mr.?
Neese.
Neese, thank you. And I do think it's relevant, however, they can, the applicant can, and the objector can, and anybody in the public can, say now that they have no issue with the planner, and then ultimately, whatever way this case goes, they can always raise it down the line.
Yeah, no, I realize that.
Conflict of interest issues are not waivable in front of the board. So, whatever they say now is not particularly relevant to whether or not the board feels that there is a, excuse me, a potential conflict of interest.
No, I understand that. I just wanted to put it on, I just wanted to get it out in the open as to what exactly, because what I'm hearing now is not the typical conflict of interest that you hear. The typical one is, he works for, you know, he works for somebody that we do business with, or he's a direct adversary in some area. So, that's what, that's, I just wanted to get straight, what the exact nature of the objection was. And I understand the potential. I know you can't waive conflict, and I know that if we deny it, or we approve it, somebody could come in and say that her position affected that decision, or whatever. So, but I'd just like the board to make an educated decision, because this is, you know, it's a big decision here. Do we, do we keep a planner that we trust, that wrote a nice report, or do we get a substitute planner on the basis of a conflict that is, that is, everyone's telling us there's a conflict, but we don't, I just want to know more carefully about it.
I understand that point of view completely, Mr. Chairman, and I think you're right to question it, but I also agree with your counsel that what, if the board decides that it needs a substitute planner, I think that would go a long way to resolving anything down the road in the future.
Okay. I mean, I understand that, I'm just, it's not, it's not a willy-nilly decision here, you know, I mean, it's not something, especially when there's not a clear conflict like you normally have.
Right.
It's a little bit third-party type thing.
What happens if this client has worked with every planner that we would go to next?
Exactly.
You know, like, where's it stop? What if, what if your client paid taxes to the municipality? Is it a conflict that we're the board that's seeing it?
The issue, the issue is the, the law does not distinguish between what Liz does at her firm versus what one of her partners does, in the same way that Steve and I, as partners of the same firm, it doesn't matter if I'm here versus Steve, or Liz is here versus her colleague. The issue is that it treats the business organization as an entity, as the client. And the issue is where there is an indirect or direct financial interest, it can cause, and again, there's no published case that says for sure this is absolutely a conflict, but my advice remains with the board that if I interpret the local government ethics law broadly, especially, again, considering the infancy of this case, my advice to the board would be just get ahead of it and resolve it. We can resolve the notice issue tonight, give the applicant a date certain so as to not further prejudice them, considering the timing of this letter, and move forward with the case.
And I will represent that we have no issue with the notice, and that will, that will satisfy Mr. Cali, and I hope to satisfy the board.
Well, thank you for that. I was going to ask you that, so.
Sure.
You know, you want...
Can I just add, our attorney, a question? So, you said a conflict of interest can't be waived, so there doesn't need to be a standing by a party to bring that conflict of interest. So, anyone in the public at any point could bring this up?
Absolutely.
So, it's not just someone who feels aggrieved by this action?
Absolutely. In theory, the conflict could be asserted down the line. Let's say there's an approval or a denial, and the party whose decision that, the position that was adverse to, or a member of the public, could, in theory, challenge the action in court, and I'm assuming, like Larry said, count two of the complaint will be, the board acted contrary to the local government ethics law, and the proceedings from the inception were tainted because of a conflict of interest of your consultant. Anyone can raise the issue.
Yeah. So, now that it's been raised to the board in a public hearing, the likelihood of someone from the public bringing that issue forward, even if it was waived tonight?
Well, it can't be waived.
You can't be...
Or not, even if Liz's firm was kept on tonight, now that this is in public, there could be some other party that comes up to certify or to claim this issue later on.
I think I understand the question.
On that, if I may, the conflict only exists because of Mr. Neese's client, though. So, if they were out of the picture, there is no conflict, whether it exists or otherwise. I think that only because of their involvement is there, in open quotes, conflict.
Right.
Right, if they participate in the proceedings as an objector.
Yeah.
Right, but I think I understand your question, that now that it's public, right, someone who didn't attend any of the meetings, didn't ask any questions or participate at all, could see the resolution of approval or denial after this board takes action and go to court and raise it as an issue, even if they were not involved in the proceeding at all.
Okay.
The caveat to that, whether it would be successful or not is another story.
Right, right.
But he's not saying it would be a successful challenge, it just could be a count in the challenge.
Agreed. I was just trying to get the clarification of...
And they could even do it even if it wasn't raised here at the meeting, if they found out about it. Even if it wasn't raised here at the meeting, if they, if it was, if they determined, if they found out about it later on, they could still raise it. It's not because we're bringing it up here.
Yes, I understand, and I think that to the point of that nobody in the public would know who the other potential applicant is using as a planning firm, the public at this...
True. I mean, they could find out.
Right, I mean, they could find out, but, but the reason behind it is the abundance of caution to the fact that something could come down the road.[1709.74]
Yes, but, well, that's true. I just want to make sure that we base our decision on something that is more, is tangible enough to, to make, to make the reason sufficient.
Can I, can I say a couple of things? I'm sorry. But one thing I want to say is, I've actually reviewed CSH applications on behalf of boards in other communities. This has never been an issue because Mr. Nice's client is a rival in, within the same community. So this has all of a sudden become an issue. The second thing I would say is, this may be brought up, and I defer, I'm not an attorney, but that doesn't mean that a judge will agree. And the third thing I want to say is, even if I were to recuse myself, that doesn't preclude Mr. Nice's client from still filing lawsuit.
Oh, it's still challenging, the decision.
Even if I'm not involved. So I, you know, it's not like, oh, this is going to prevent, this is just preventing one aspect potentially.
Why count in the complaint?
Exactly.
Yeah, I know. It's, it's, it's only one count in the complaint. They could still take, his client could still, if we grant, if hypothetically we grant this, his client could still come back and challenge it on other grounds.
Of course.
Of our decision-making. That's, that's understandable, and a judge may or may not agree with that.
Right.
You know, so that, that's, I wanted to hash this out tonight, because it's not a simple thing to decide. It's not something that we just want to willy-nilly throw somebody off and, you know, say, but. And I understand, I respect our attorney, and I understand, and I really do respect his decision. I just want to make sure we make an educated decision on this. Any other questions, board members?
I would just also add one additional wrinkle here, is that, that the applicant hasn't necessarily disagreed with taking that as a course of action.
I know.
And as a result, I, I think that the, again, I would stress that the board, you know, exercise some foresight and close this issue off early in the, in the process, rather than Steve and I having to defend, defend it in the future.
You don't want work?
I've got plenty of work.
All right, well, I understand that. I just, you know, I just want to make sure that we're making it on an educated basis, and we're not just doing it because somebody says there's a conflict. Okay, yes.
Mr. Nice, thank you for coming. Do you have any objections to anyone else that we find, we use as counsel?
As, as planner?
A planner, engineer?
How would he know unless we picked him?
No, no, engineer, traffic advisory, our attorney, anyone else?
Let me just say that I'm not aware today of any potential conflicts with any of your other professionals, especially Mr. Vujic, who I've worked with prior.
Your client hasn't worked with him prior?
I love it.
The objection is because your client has worked with your firm before, so?
No.
Has your client worked with his firm before?
I'm, I'm throwing in a little levity. Mr. Vujic was at one time the representative for Montclair Planning Board, where I'm the planning board attorney.
Oh, okay.
With a separate consulting firm.
Oh, okay.
On my end.
So can you be here if he's here?
Come on, that's.
No, I just, I mean, I'm trying to make sure that we're not going to do this every time that you come, that it's going to be somebody else. I think that's why you asked the question, too.
No, it's, it's based on his client's involvement with Liz's firm.
Right.
The, the long and the short of it is, yeah, that he's claiming since his client pays someone in Liz's firm to do work for them, he believes that taints Liz's, Liz's appearance here. Whether we think that does, I don't know. That's up to you guys, and I'm not expressing one way or the other. I just want to make sure that everyone has their questions answered, and has the right decision in their head that, based on what we heard tonight.
So going off of Gary's point, this is, your client is the LLC. So the principals that own the LLC, they're not going to come back and say that, on another project that they were the principals of, that they, you know, are conflicted out, are traffic, or are?
Engineer.
Engineer are conflicted out, because the principals for another one of their projects, just to clarify.
Again, I can't make any representation. The only potential for conflict that I'm aware of standing before you tonight is the potential with Liz's firm. That's it. That's as far as I can say.
Okay, can we ask that next time you come here, and I imagine you're going to come again, you check with your client to make sure that he doesn't have a problem with anybody else?
I can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Two things for the record.
Get closer to the mic.
Two things for the record on this point is, Mr. Nice's letter indicates that there are pending matters. I'd like him to put on the record, in fact, that there are pending applications that his client has with Liz's firm, and name the town and the boards they're pending before.
Fine.
I, I have no doubt that he spoke the truth in his letter, but I think it should go on the record for the optics of it. The second is, I'd like a confirmation from Mr. Nice that he's not challenging our notice, which would be another hiccup coming.
He did?
I didn't hear you. I missed.
No, he didn't say that.
Good, perfect, thank you. So then just that one item. I'd like the record.
Yeah, would you explain to us the?
I can't. I'm not sure what other applications are pending with your firm by my client at this point. I do know, or at least believe, that there are, so I can't do that. Perhaps by next meeting, I'll be in a position where I could send?
No, I understand that, but I mean, you don't, off the top of your head, you don't know how many or if there are. Okay, but you do, let me ask you a question. Is it, are they the, the regular planner that your client uses? Or is it just they use it on a, on a per-case basis?
I can't answer that question either. I don't know what regular planner means.
Well, is, do they go to them for all their projects, or do they spread their work around? You don't know?
I, I really don't know.
Okay, all right, okay. It would have been nice. All right.
The board can request that in writing if, if you so desire.
Yeah, I mean, could you send our board secretary a letter with the current applications that you have that is, that are being heard by Liz's firm, and what, what municipalities they're in front of? And what the status of them are, you know?
But Mr. Flynn, let me just get some clarification from you. If my colleague were to resign from his client, would that eliminate the conflict?
It would not, only because there is a case on point that states that the business organization declining to do further work after the conflict has been identified is not sufficient to cure the conflict of interest.
At least not currently. It might be in the future.
Yeah, and perhaps in the future, but no, you, it, it wouldn't be as if Liz's firm could sever ties with the applicant or any of its affiliates, and subsequently, you know, based on my advice, participate.
They can't pull apart his power?
They can't, they can't do.
Okay.
One more thing, Mr. Chair, if you would. We'd like to know what level of involvement we can expect from our objector. I mean, are we expecting issues with design, traffic, planning, the use? Are you bringing your own experts? I imagine you've got a roadmap sort of planned out. We'd like to know what we're in store for, at least at a superficial level, so when we come back. I think it's for the benefit of the board and the applicant to understand the level of objection we anticipate, and what issues are, sort of globally speaking.
Are you prepared to answer that?
I am not, and I think that's a little unfair at this point to require.
Okay, well, whether it's unfair or not, I'm just asking, are you prepared?
No.
Okay, all right. So right now, you're not prepared to tell us exactly what the connection is business-wise, what applications there are, and what the level of your, of your objection is?
I will, if the court, sorry, if the board directs it, and I think you have.
Yeah.
We will forward a letter to Ms. Coons, saying what the actual projects are.
Okay.
That my client's involved in today with Liz's firm.
All right, I appreciate that.
Of course.
Because, you know, you do understand that regardless of the fact, and I understand you being an attorney, you're writing this on good faith from what you're being told by your client, but at the same time, there's not a lot of facts in your letter.
I understand.
You know, so I just wanted to get that straight. Okay, so, do the board members feel comfortable voting tonight without any additional information about the conflict for Liz? Just take a poll. I'm not taking a vote now.
Yes.
You do feel comfortable, yeah, okay. How about everybody else? Do you feel comfortable voting tonight about it?
Sure, I have a question, whether we vote yes or no. Are we doing anything else tonight?
No. If we're voting, if we vote no, that we don't want to recuse her, the applicant can start if he wants, if he wishes. If we vote, if we vote yes, that we are going to recuse her, then the applicant cannot start because we need a new planner.
We wouldn't move on to engineering or traffic and get something done tonight?
We can't.
No, because there's a planning expert, or there's a planning memorandum in the record.
Yeah.
It has to be removed from the record.
That, that planning memorandum has to be changed and removed and made by another. So no, we can't move forward. And I don't even know if we could move forward if we do not recuse her, because I don't know how, what the level of the applicant's preparedness is tonight based on this issue, so. That would be up to the applicant. I mean, he might want to start, he might want to start with an overview. I don't know, it's his, it's his prerogative. So, do I hear a motion to vote whether we, how are we going to do this now?
Mr. Board Attorney?
Yeah, someone has to make a, a motion either to?
All right, let me make a motion that we, I make a motion that we recuse Liz based on the objection of the objector. So you can either vote yes, or you vote no, we don't recuse her.
Mr. Chair, I would, I would suggest that we don't recuse Liz, but we recuse Liz's firm.
Liz's firm, okay.
It's not personal.
My mistake, we recuse the firm that, Liz personally and the firm that she works for. So I'm making a motion where you'd either say yes to it, and we recuse her, or no, you don't. So do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
So the motion is a yes for the recuse?
Yes.
Chairman, correct?
No.
Well, you can't make the, the motion if you're going to vote no.
Why not?
Because the motion is an affirmative motion.
Oh, well, okay. Can I make a non-affirmative motion?
You can make a, you can make a motion recommending that Liz not?
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that recommends that Liz not be recused. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Now I want to retract my other motion. Do I hear a second to that?
Second.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Chairman, correct?
No, yes. Yes.
Okay. Mr. Hane?
Yes.
Mr. Gianakis?
I'm not really sure.
That's not an answer.
Vote yes or no?
Or abstain.
Or abstain, but that's.
I'm going off what our legal counsel was, so I guess I'm voting yes, I think.
No, you're voting no.
I'm voting no.
No, you don't, no. If you want to recuse her, you vote no.
Okay. Mr. Flatley?
No.
No.
Mr. Opalka?
No.
So the noes have it.
Wait, there's six, right? One, two?
Yeah, did, you didn't?
Oh, Vice Chairman Grosskopf, I'm so sorry. Vice Chairman?
Just for the fun of it, yes.
Yes, okay. Well, then that's a tie.
Oh, my God.
Now let's play again.
So you need another motion. The motion didn't carry.
Yeah.
Motion to recuse or motion to not recuse.
Okay, I make a motion that we not recuse Liz and her firm as our planning on this application. Second? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, Vice Chairman, correct?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Gianakis?
I'm sticking with what my answer was before. I don't understand the rephrasing of the question.
There, there is no.
There is, we're just doing it again.
Vote yes for Liz to stay and no for Liz to go.
Well, I, I, I don't think that her firm should be here, so I voted no.
Okay.
Mr. Hane?
Yes.
Mr. Flatley?
No.
Mr. Opalka?
No.
So what do we do?
Well?
The only other option is to?
Till the next meeting.
Carry it. Maybe you have an additional member. The other thing you could do is?
Well, we'll have that additional information from the objector.
Right, and, and you could ask that the objector and the applicant brief their positions for the board?
I, I, that, I would request that.
In writing. I mean, we have this letter that came in late.
Yeah.
I, I'm?
Do some legal research and also factual information.
I'm fairly confident in my conclusion, but I, you know, it's the board's decision.
No, I, and I appreciate that, and I, but I just want to make sure we're doing it on, on the correct basis here. So, I mean, maybe with some additional information and?
About 10 days before?
Yeah, right.
10 days before, for sure.
At least 10 days before, yeah. No day before.
Well, prior, we have some other discussion. I'm prior to getting to a date, so.
Yeah, all right.
Well, my, so my first question procedurally, if the board should vote to recuse Liz from the application, is the report then null and void?
The report would have to be removed from the record.
Yeah.
The record. Does that mean it's operable or not?
It would remain operable.
It would remain operable, okay.
But that doesn't, I mean, it doesn't, that doesn't affect whether the board can consider it, just because it's subject to Oprah.
Okay. Now the next question, in considering a date to carry the application?
Yeah, but that, the next time we vote on this, doesn't mean that it has to be during their application.
No, 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 we'll, we'll vote on it, I, I?
The next meeting.
I would say put it on the 16th, absolutely.
Yeah, put it on the 16th. So we need this information from you guys by?
The end, by Friday.
By Friday.
This Friday?
This Friday, yes, this Friday.
Imagine having some time to rest, to review it.
Yeah.
And Mr. Chair, just so the applicant's position is clear, we defer to the pleasure of the board and your counsel. We've got essentially no dog in his fight to the extent that whether Liz's office is here or not, we still think we have an objector here, and I think Liz mentioned that as well. So we don't intend to brief anything, I don't think, on the matter. I think the objector probably should make his case better than the 11th hour in a, you know, a pretty lean letter.
You're, you're free to, to brief it or not to brief.
Right, so just, just so?
But I'd like to see a brief from the person who's?
I don't think you're going to expect anything from us, you know, the applicant's concern is?
Let me put it this way, if you see his brief and you want to align on it, I would say his should be in by Friday, and yours should be in by next Tuesday.
Fair enough.
That way, at least if you see something in his brief that you think you want to comment on, you're free to.
It's very judicious, and I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, and we'll take you up on that possibly.
Because I know you say that now, but wait till you see what he has to say, and you may want to comment on it.
Yeah.
Because for the future, you don't know. I mean, you know?
I didn't see or hear much yet, to be candid with you, in, in my opinion, but we'll, we'll see what comes of it.
Okay.
Okay. We'd just like to get on for the substance of this case.
Well, so it is. That's why we're doing this decision on the next meeting, not necessarily your?
We appreciate that.
So we're going to carry to the 16th without further notice for the consideration of this issue?
Right.
And then subsequently, we will carry to a date where the applicant presumably will be able to put their case on?
Yes, yes.
Just want to note that Mr. Calley, when he presented to you initially, that he thought it was prudent for the board to find an alternate planner. I just want to reiterate.
No, I understand that, but his decision, it doesn't really matter to us as far as, because we want to make sure that what we're doing is, is not affecting the board adversely and not affecting the public. I don't see any public out here, nobody has said anything in the public, because your letter came in on the same day. If on the 16th, other people come in and have an opinion, that's one thing, too, because your information that you give us is public information, so.
I understand. Mr. Chairman, one more, sorry.
Yes.
One more item is, if on the 16th, we shouldn't, we should intend to appear, right? And we're going to be carried to that date now?
No, 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 you're not.
We're not.
You can appear to decide, to hear our decision.
We wouldn't be, we wouldn't be starting that night if the board voted to retain Liz. Okay, just want to confirm that.
All we're going to be doing is hearing this issue that night.
Fair enough.
Because we already have applicants scheduled for that night.
I understand.
We're going to move you to another night subsequent, so that this issue will be resolved at that point, and we'll get another, we'll get either another planning report, or the similar, or the same one, and then you'll start.
Understood.
Do you know when that meeting will be?
Well, we got to find out now.
Well, procedurally, I don't, because, and we'll have to wait till the 16th, because I, there's a couple of things that will happen if Liz is recu, if, if her firm is recused. Generally, we would go to our conflict planner.
Right.
Which the board designated as a conflict planner at our reorg meeting in January. However, we can't use that planner, that's Jessica Caldwell, Caldwell Associates, because she was the one that did the overlay and the, the redevelopment plan for the site of your client.
Right, so that's a direct conflict.
So then it, it, we go back to the board attorneys, and they need to advise me as to whether, if that's the case, if we have to go out for RFP. I would like to hope that we don't, because between our three professionals, I think that the three professionals, I spoke with John Jar earlier briefly, I think that we can, the four of us can put our heads together and come up with a couple names of planners, professional planners, that we all know, and that would be my hope. But I don't know what the timing will be. If I have to go out for RFP, we're looking at July or August. If I don't have to go out to RFP, we could get a June date. So I honestly?
What dates, hold up. June 6th is already taken, right?
Correct.
What about the second date in June?
June 20th is not, is, is open at this point.
Is open, okay. So why don't we tentatively put them on June 20th?
We can.
Because?
I mean, but we have to do that at the next meeting.
Right, at the next meeting, we'll do that, yes. But just don't assign that date to anybody else, is what I'm saying. Because hopefully, we'll resolve this issue one way or the other with Liz, and then we'll move ahead on June 20th, when we determine that?
I just wanted to make it known procedurally?
And in the meantime, just to play it safe, come up with some alternate names of planners, just in case it goes that way. And then we can move on that.
Yes.
So the, the board will convene on this application for this limited issue on the 16th?
Right.
The announcement is hereby made for anybody in the public, that this matter will be carried to the 16th, same time, same place, at which point the board will make a decision. At that point, if we have a date certain, it sounds like there's a date that's open in June, the board will make another announcement preserving the notice and carrying it without further notice to the June meeting, provided that we're able to work it out on, on our end. end. But as of now, your notice is preserved, and we would just need any extension of time of decision put in writing to Deborah.
Certainly.
And we do need a motion, second and all in favor, to carry the application.
Do I hear a motion to carry the application?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, and we don't mean to be difficult, but this is a very important question, and your letter was not that explicit, so it's, it's, okay, thank you.
Can I ask a attorney a question?
Sure.
How do we know if the objecting attorneys, if we make a decision at our next meeting?
Well, we have to one way or the other.
When we make a decision, if that decision is that we have to go out for RFP and find another planner, how do we know that the objector won't have a problem with that planner?
Oh, because whatever, whoever planner we're talking about...
We're going to have to run, they will have to run an explicit conflicts check in their own firm.
Correct.
So, it's basically the objector then picks the planner?
No.
No, no, the board picks them, provided that the board, the, if there is going to be a substitute planner, that they don't have a conflict of interest.
By, on either end.
Right.
It's like pulling jurors.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, we have to send, give the name to both the applicant and the objector to see there's no, there's no conflict.
May I?
Yes.
Are our firms explicitly prohibited from providing the planning services, given that we've participated in discussing the application already?
No, not at all.
And it's, it's common that...
They're not objecting to you now, so that sounds...
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's common that, that the board consultants for engineering planning are the same firm, it happens all the time.
But if, if either of us have professionals with those credentials...
Yeah, that would be, you, you would be able to throw your name in the mix.
Just making, I just want to, you know, I, I haven't reviewed specifically your solicitation part of your ordinance, so I want to be sure that whatever has to be fair and open will be fair and open. I would have our associate, Chris, looking at that issue, but provided that we can, you know, confirm that, should we need a substitute planner, that, you know, we do it through the correct legal channels.
Yeah, all right, thank you. So, we know what we're going to be doing, what are we doing on the 16th? We got those three...
Three residuals.
Three residuals.
Carrying two...
Everybody has, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I, I can't resist, I, so, at the end of the day, my understanding was, when we, when we, we, uh, did the RFPs to the board, that Joe's firm and our firm were also mutually back and forth with regard to conflict, traffic and conflict, um...
Engineering.
Engineering. I know that when we submit our polls, we also put in for planning. Joe, did you put planning on, on yours as well? You probably did, right?
Probably, but I'll, I'll have to double check.
So, most likely, if our firms are not conflicted, we do very little private development work, there's like literally two private developers we work for, so it's really easy for us to make sure, I can ask right now if we want to, you know, do we need work with a company called Active Acquisitions, and do you have anything with, with the Mandelbaum organization? And, you know, so long as, there's only two private developers we need any work for. And, and even the Mandelbaum one's very deep, because we only do G T work, and it's through the G T.
I haven't seen, I do a lot of work for the Mandelbaums, we have not crossed paths on the private side, so...
Well, there's a lot of the Mandelbaums too, but...
Common name, okay.
So, Mike, Michael, John, Joe, we're talking about the Mandelbaums.
Yes, that's, that's our ones.
That's what I'm talking about, yeah.
Okay, so you're in conflict with that?
No, there's no conflict. We've never been on the same side of the table.
To make things simple, I think that Joe and I can work with Deb, and our firms should be able to...
That's fine, that, if we do decide to...
I just wanted to exclude, my question was to exclude us now, before anybody makes any other efforts.
Yeah, no, I don't think, I don't think you're being excluded, yeah.
Make sure it's clean now.
So, yeah.
Yeah, and then, like I said, if one of, on one of our firms can report the plan, then you don't have to do the RFP, you've, you've already went through that process, you can just, you know, select which party you want to the application.
Okay, sounds good, okay. All right, guys, I'm sorry we couldn't get started, but...
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Good night, folks.
Any other business?
Yes.
Yes, what do you have?
Special meeting dates.
Special meeting dates, oh, I love special...
This one was pretty special.
Yeah, wasn't it?
Hope it's on bowling night.
If I can add some additional levity, the only reason I was available to cover for Steve is because the board, my board, that meets first and third Tuesdays every month, my client, who I represented it with a private development, was appearing before the board.
So, you had a conflict.
And I had a conflict, and that's why I'm here.
Thank God for conflict.
It's a team effort.
Yeah.
It's a team effort. All right, so, so I want to, I want to run a couple of things by the board's members that are here tonight. We don't have to finalize this tonight, we, because I haven't put anything, normally, I put in an email together, and I say, but now, with everything that's happened in the last five hours, three out, four hours, whatever it has been.
Four.
Yeah, four, thank you, Liz. My head is kind of spinning. I want to remind the board, you have almost, I think, five use variances waiting in the wings.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, five. And as you, as the board knows, now that I'm putting three residuals, the three residuals we have, I'm putting them on the 16th, under the assumption we're going to get them done that night, because I don't want to keep them waiting, use variances, and they're mostly commercial, it's a little bit different. But, as you know, between Taco Bell and this application, two use variances that are currently in front of you, they take a whole meeting.
Yes, if not more.
Correct, so here's the thing, here's what I'm going to throw at you. Taco Bell briefly, Hozzabell, excuse me, for the, for the public, whoever's listening, they briefly discussed asking the board for a special meeting. They did not confirm with me, but I had offered them a Thursday in May.
Okay.
So, I was saying perhaps the 19th, uh, sorry, the 18th or the 25th in May. Now, that would help out your schedule, but that would give you three meetings in the month of May. The other option I would like the board to consider is in July and August, I would like that, those are typically...
Wait, wait, now, what, what Thursdays in May?
Uh, either the 18th or the 25th. I'd, I'd say that, I'd prefer the 25th, because then it's not the same week.
Right, exactly.
That you, that you all have something, because I...
And that's for Hozzabell.
Correct.
As opposed to the 6th?
Well, they're, right now, they're scheduled for the 16th, and then we're going to carry them.
Oh, they're scheduled for the 16th.
Correct, I did give them June 6th, but I can fill that with another application.
Yeah, June 6th, neither Tom Flatley and myself will be here, because we, we work in the polls.
Correct.
So, you're down, and you need five people for that.
Need seven people.
Seven people, yeah.
Correct.
Well, you need five minimum for that.
No, I need seven minimum.
You need seven.
A use variance, I need seven minimum.
Oh, you need, oh, that's a use variance, right, you need seven, okay.
Correct. So, I, so that's why I would like the board to possibly consider the 25th of May to continue the Taco Bell application.
And the planning board is definitely having a meeting on the 23rd, we can't take that.
There's no definite with the planning board right now.
Okay, so they may or may not have one on that day.
Correct, the chairman of the planning board has not given me the, the planning schedule that far ahead, so...
Oh, okay. So, if you check with him and they're not having a meeting on the 23rd, can we put him on that date? Keep it on a Tuesday?
He's not going to give up the meeting, Ed.
He's not going to give up his day, even though he's not using it?
He's not going to give it up.
Hell, use it.
Oh, God, okay.
Because there's, because the master plan is in the wings, I guarantee you, he's not going to give it up.
Oh, okay, fine, that's fine, if he, I, I don't want him to give it up. What about the 30th?
Oh, the 30th we could do, I forgot.
Why don't we do the, why don't we keep it on a Tuesday?
That, yeah, as long as everybody wants to come the day after Memorial Day, I'm fine with that.
I don't care.
Yeah.
We'll do it the 31st.
We can't...
No.
We could do it on the, on the 31st, Wednesday, but, so we could do it on the 30th or the 31st.
Either one.
It's my birthday.
Are you bad on the 30th, or?
No, 31st is my birthday.
Oh, no, we don't want to go on the 31st.
Don't move it to the 31st.
No, on the 30th, why don't we, why don't we give him the 30th?
Uh, that would be tremendous help for your schedule, but that's, that's a lot of meetings back to back, just I want to...
But at least it's a different week.
Correct.
And it's, it's two weeks after, you know, the 16th, so...
All right, so then we would need a motion, a second and all in favor, to hold a special meeting for the Taco Bell application.
The Hozzabell.
Hozzabell on the 30th of May.
Okay, do I hear a motion for that?
That's Dennis.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Hold on, please. Yes, Mr. Chairman? Are you sure? Okay, thank you, sir. Take it. He said you can have any date you want. So, if you'd like the planning board for the 23rd, you can have the planning board for the 23rd.
Have they had a business?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Sando.
Yeah, thank you.
Is he watching on TV?
Yes. Of course he's watching.
So, now you have the choice, you can have it either the 23rd or the 30th.
What do you guys, what do you guys prefer? Just take a poll here, would you prefer the 23rd a week later or the 30th two weeks later?
Let's not roll in Memorial Day weekend.
Okay, that's fine, I don't...
Ed, I'm going to be in Alaska on the 23rd.
Let's do the 30th then.
It's a little cold.
I don't want to, I don't want to lose, Tom.
Okay, that's fine.
Let's do the 30th, I don't want to lose a member, because you lose one member, and as you can see, we lost two other ones here.
Well, we're losing him on the 6th, so, yeah, let's keep him for, yeah, agreed.
So, let's do it on the 30th.
The 30th it is.
All right, do I hear a motion to make a special meeting on the 30th for Hozzabell?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good, 30th it is.
And then, moving on to the calendar, and thank you, members, for allowing me to go through this spiel tonight, since the 16th is going to be a busy meeting.
Yeah.
I do recommend, I would like to, hopefully, the board, recommend that the board add a meeting in July and August. Normally, those months only have one meeting, because of vacation schedules at summer, obviously, but I would like to recommend that we pick dates for a second meeting in both of those months. Now, if we don't need them...
What meeting in July?
We only have one meeting in July scheduled and one meeting in August. I would like to add...
What's the meeting we have scheduled?
The meeting in July is the 11th, because the 4th, the first Tuesday is the 4th of July, correct.
Right, okay, so you want to add another date?
I would like to add another date in both of those months, and again, if we don't need them, I would be surprised if we don't, but then we don't have to have...
Well, the planning board has it on the 18th or not?
The planning board has the 18th, so the available date in July would be the 25th.
All right, anybody, anybody have an issue with the 25th? You do, what are you doing?
I'll be in Maine.
Okay, well, I can't give you every day. Does anybody else have a problem with the 25th?
My wife is in a different state.
Yes, does anybody else have a problem with the 25th?
July 25th?
Yeah, July 25th. Any vacations, any other plans?
I'm on the 18th.
Okay, so that's the 25th.
That's the planning board meeting anyways.
Yeah, that's the 25th, you can't do it on the 25th, on the 18th. He's not giving us two days.
He said we could have any day we want.
He said we can give you whatever you want.
No, that was for the month of May, that was for the month of May. I can't push my luck yet. All right, so, do I hear a motion to have a special meeting on the July 25th Tuesday of 2023, 2023?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Everybody in favor? Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you. And then, the last date to consider would be, now, August 1st, we technically don't, we don't usually have a meeting that night, because it's National Night Out, and...
Are we even having that? I heard there's a...
Yes.
Oh, we are having it?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Oh, okay, all right.
And...
You're going to stay home.
And generally, generally, I don't like to schedule at that same night only, because...
Yeah, I don't either, no. I'm outside with...
But I was going to say, the traffic is crazy here in this building, yeah. So, the planning board has the 8th, the, the zoning board is scheduled for August 15th, I would say either, then the next date would be the following week, August 22nd, or August 29th, two weeks later.
Anybody have a problem with either one of those, of course?
I might.
What date?
I got to find out, I got to win my son college.
So, you don't know if it's the 22nd or the 29th? What about you?
Both.
You're being Maine?
Um, yes.
Or whatever other state. All right, anyone else?
I would like to point at the 29th, and then we'd have a meeting again on the 5th.
No, I understand that.
So, perhaps the 22nd would be better? Wait, oh, wait, oh, we're, either way, we're backing up.
Yeah, either way, you're backing up.
Either way, we're backing up, either, when you, when would you know? Can you make a call to your wife, the boss, and find out?
Right now?
Yeah, yes, or text her or do something, because we have to know, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to wait till the 16th.
Not a problem, not a problem.
Yeah, check with your, with your social planner.
I will also email Ms. Brennan and Mr. Rosenberg and Mr. Roni to confirm these dates and let them know.
Yeah, well, you're letting them know. I mean, actually, to be honest with you, Jerry should be marked excused, because he did mention to me that he may not be able to make it.
Oh, okay.
He did, he did text me, and I said, if you can, please try, so he's not absent, he did let me know. I didn't want to interrupt you when you were saying that.
Okay, thank you.
I was hoping he would be able to make it, but I guess he didn't, so...
No answer.
Oh, okay, well...
So, then the answer's not no.
Okay, guys, not, not with, what kind of application would you be putting on that day? I mean, you know, or...
One of, multiple use variances.
Use variances, so we need seven, then?
Pretty much.
All right. Oh, God.
I mean, we don't have to decide the August date.
Can we decide that on the 16th?
We can decide that, yes.
Can you find that out before the 16th?
We can, we can even decide it in July if we need to.
No, well, let's, I want to decide it as soon as possible.
Yeah, okay.
But let's wait till the 16th until, and then, why don't you, when you email them, tell us about, tell them about the dates we did decide, and ask them to decide between the 22nd and 29th, so we have their opinion.
We'll do a poll, perfect, okay, I can do that.
And then we don't, we know who's available, okay, sounds good.
Perfect, and that is all the business that I have.
Great, okay, well, I appreciate everybody's patience tonight, this was a, a unique subject matter that we've decided, that we've considered tonight. I don't think we've ever really had this discussion before, in my, in my over 10 years on the board, I don't think we've had this discussion. So, this is something that is a new legal theory, and I hope that we get enough information from the, the objector to make a, an educated decision. All right, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you guys might want to stay all night, but I don't.